Your attendance tonight, look forward to a good meeting. If I could ask Father Daniel Magumu, Church of the Ascension, please come forward, and he'll lead us in the invocation. If everyone would stand for the invocation and remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, we're delighted to have you here.
My dear friends, tonight we are gathered here to make decisions about the future of Virginia Beach. In a sense, we are time travelers who must look past the present to see the future and the consequences of the actions we take tonight. For this, we need guidance from the God who is beyond time. For this, we need guidance from the God who sees us all as family. In Tanzania where I am from, there is a phrase that I pray will guide this meeting, Koyumba Halaumun. It means to walk together, and so we pray. Gracious God, you who see what cannot see, give us wisdom to rise above our individual interests and make decisions tonight that will benefit all the citizens of Virginia Beach. Help us to walk together towards the future and not separately. Help us to walk together in our discussions that they would be affirming and not unkind anyone. Help us to walk together as elected citizens and not as privileged that are set apart. Help us to walk together to create a city in which the poor are heard and their needs met. Thank you for having heard us. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Father, thank you again for coming down. We appreciate it very much. You have the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you.
Do you have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
So moved.
Do you have a second? Any discussion? Call for the question, please.
By a vote of eight to zero, you have certified the closed session to be in accordance with the motion to recess.
Do you have a motion for approval of the minutes of June 7th, 2016?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call for the question, please.
By a vote of eight to zero, you have approved the minutes as submitted.
Captain Hewlett, if you could step forward, please, I'd be most appreciative. For those of you who don't know, Captain Hewlett is the commanding officer over at Joint Expeditionary Base Little Creek Fort Story. And I would just say to you, obviously does a great job as the commanding officer, but I'm happy to say a great friend as well. And it is my pleasure to read this proclamation, and I must look good for you, sir. Whereas Captain Hewlett is a native of Sterling, Virginia, a graduate of Virginia Tech, and commissioned in November 1986 through Officer Candidate School in Newport, Rhode Island. And whereas Captain Hewlett is in command of Joint Expeditionary Base Little Creek Fort Story in February 2013. Whereas Captain Hewlett was appointed by the Governor of Virginia to the Council on Interstate Compact for the Education of Military Children and is an alumnus of the Civic Leadership Institute class of 2015. Captain Hewlett holds a Master's in Science and Strategy and Joint Campaign Planning from the National Defense University Joint Advanced Warfighting School. And whereas his command tours include Commanding Officer Maritime Civil Affairs and Security Training Command, Commanding Officer Provincial Reconstruction Team, and Forward Operating Base Fair of Afghanistan, and Commanding Officer Beachmaster Unit Two. Additional tours include Chief of Staff Naval Expeditionary Combat Command Pacific, Chief of Plans and Policy Stability Division, Headquarters International Security Assistance Force Kabul, Afghanistan, Executive Officer and Anti-Submarine Warfare Officer USS Chassen, Weapons Officer and Combat System Officer USS Ramage DDG-61, and Gunnery Officer, First Lieutenant and Combat Information Center Officer USS Berkeley. And whereas his personal decorations include the Legion of Merit II Awards, Bronze Star, Defense Meritorious Service Medals II Awards, Meritorious Service Awards Medals III Awards, Naval Commendation Medals III Awards, and Navy and Marine Corps Achievement Medals III Awards. And whereas as commander of Joint Expeditionary Base Little Creek Fort Story, Captain Hewlett has been exemplary city manager/mayor of the largest employer in the city of Virginia Beach. And whereas he managed a base of several thousand acres that is utilized by the nation's finest warriors, including Marines, SEALs, Explosive Ordnance and Deviation Technicians, the Coast Guard, U.S. Army, and multiple other commands and activities, including large ships. And whereas he carried out these activities in a fashion befitting the finest in naval service. And whereas Captain Hewlett has been a great neighbor and facilitator between the city's largest employer and its employees and the citizens of Virginia Beach. And whereas Captain Hewlett epitomizes the concept of an officer and a gentleman in the finest tradition of Navy service and is a patriot and a warrior. Now therefore, I, William D. Sessoms, Jr., Mayor of the City of Virginia, Virginia, do hereby proclaim, June 21st, 2016, Captain Frankie Hewlett Day. In Virginia Beach, I encourage all citizens to celebrate Captain Hewlett's work as commander at Joint Expeditionary Base Little Creek Fort Story over the previous three years and his decades of service to our country. Frank is honored to give this to you, sir. One thing that I would say has been exceptional is Frank has been here for three years, a little more than three years.
Forty-one months.
And which is highly unusual, you know, most of our wonderful friends in the Navy are here eighteen months and two years. So we've really had the opportunity to do a lot of great things together, and we are certainly going to miss you. If you'd like to make a comment?
Absolutely. I didn't know you were going to give me the mic.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, Mr. Hanson, citizen, I tell you, I've been around the world for the last thirty years, and many places I have been, at least in feeling like in the military, we feel like tourists or a visitor in our own communities because we really don't invest time and efforts where they're such a brief period and move on to our next duty assignments. So we never truly get ingrained into the local communities and et cetera. I've been doing this thirty years. I remember thirty years ago at Virginia Beach and how the Navy was treated. And I'll tell you, I cannot, the people, when you tell them how much the city has embraced the military over the last three decades, at least in my career, it is just, it's humbling on my behalf and on behalf of all the military, just the outpouring of how the community supports us. So instead of now being a tourist in my own neighborhood, I'm vested in the community. I feel like I'm part of the community. I feel like I need to, you know, be a contributor to the community as opposed to just somebody to pass it through. And that's a tribute to, once again, the great city of Virginia Beach and the amount of hospitality and the support that we get day in and day out. I'll remind everybody that sixty thousand school kids in the city of Virginia Beach and twenty thousand of them are military children. So one in three, that's just a number that captures the significant role of military. But truly, the warmth and acceptance of my family, Cindy and myself, cannot thank the city of Virginia Beach enough. The last forty-one months here has been phenomenal. I'm looking to stay here. My resumes will be on your windshield. Looking at you. I'm kidding. But no, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This is an honor. You do humble me, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, again.
For being a great friend as well.
It's an honor to do it. Thank you, sir. And this is definitely our military day-to-day. Colonel, could you come forward so we can recognize Fort Story? Counsel, I'm going to refer to the resolution that is in your packet, and I will read this resolution and then ask for a motion, please, for us to take action on it. A resolution recognizing the one-hundredth anniversary of Fort Story. Whereas Fort Story bears significant historical reference to the beginning of our country. Whereas in 1607, colonists first landed at Cape Henry where Fort Story is now located before resettling in Jamestown, Virginia with the landing site represented by a granite cross on the National Park Service land. Whereas in 1781, at the end of the Revolutionary War, the French fleet led by Admiral de Grosse blockaded the bay just offshore, preventing the British forces at Yorktown from receiving reinforcements, thus forcing Lord Cornwallis to surrender to General George Washington. Whereas in 1791, the first federally funded public works project, the Cape Henry Lighthouse, was commissioned to guide maritime commerce at the mouth of the Chesapeake Bay with completion in 1792. A new lighthouse was completed in 1881 and is still in use. Whereas in November 1909, President William Howard Taft remarked while at the Cape Henry, "We should put up a gigantic fortress right here between these capes," referring to Cape Henry and Cape Charles, and the Army purchased land at Cape Henry prior to World War I. Whereas in March 1914, the Virginia Journal Assembly ceded 343 acres in six parcels to the federal government, which was known as the Cape Henry Military Reservation, which has grown to 1,451 acres. Whereas in July 1916, Virginia Governor Henry Stewart, in conjunction with the War Department, broke ground on the fledgling fort, which was officially named after Major General John P. Story on July 24th, 1916. And whereas in February 1917, Lieutenant Colonel Daniel Warren Ketchum, U.S. Military Academy, class of 1890, became the first post-commander with two artillery companies arriving on the post from Fort Monroe. And whereas Fort Story was the first anti-aircraft artillery installation. And whereas on October 1st, 2009, the former naval amphibious base Little Creek and Fort Story merged as part of the 2005 Base Closure and Realignment Commission recommendation to establish twelve joint bases and is officially now officially named Joint Expeditionary Base Little Creek Fort Story. And whereas Fort Story utilized by all branches of the military, especially Navy Special Warfare, U.S. Marines, U.S. Coast Guard, Navy Explosive Ordnance and Disposal Technicians, and is the Army's preeminent site for logistics over-the-sea training. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Council of the City of Virginia Beach that Fort Story be recognized for its role in U.S. and Virginia history on the one-hundredth anniversary of its establishment. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Call for the question, please.
By a vote of eight to zero, you have adopted the resolution honoring or recognizing the one-hundredth anniversary of Fort Story.
And Colonel, this will be mailed to you because we had to take action on this, and it will be in the mail to you immediately after. But would you like to make some comments about the under one-hundredth anniversary on July 4th, I believe? Please.
Ladies and gentlemen, Your Honor, thank you very much. This is a great honor to accept this award in the name of Fort Story. This base is as much part of the history of the city as anything here in this city. It is part of your city seal. It is a great honor to be able to be a part of this. This is a very vibrant area. This is an area that has growth. This is an area that's on the move, and there's a great history between the base and the city. I'm very happy to be here, and the year that I've spent here has been a very good one for me, a very good one for my family, a very good one in the school system. I know that Frank, my commander, has mentioned the school systems. You have some of the best school systems that I have been, I have been in four different countries, probably six different states, and it rates as world-class for the type of venues that you have and for the professionalism that I've seen. So thank you so much, and thank you for this great honor.
Yes, sir, we thank you. And Counsel, I can give a personal testimony as to about Fort Story and what it's done during a terrible situation that we had when the Atlantic Ocean came into homes along Atlantic Avenue. I was living on 63rd Street, and we just thought it was a little rainstorm. The ocean turned out to be what the water was, and eventually the water was in our house. And Army ducks, they were called ducks then, were at Fort Story, and you all came to our rescue and hundreds others because we couldn't get out of our house because the Atlantic Ocean was in our house. But Fort Story sent those ducks and saved a lot of people's lives. And I was a child, but I promise you one thing, I'll never forget it.
Your Honor, I have a collection of photographs that I will give you when you come visit us on the fort.
I look forward to that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Counsel, we'll now move to Champion for the Arts. Carolyn Garrett has a presentation to make, I believe. Carolyn, we're delighted to have you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen and other city officials. We are here tonight with great excitement. We are going to recognize a champion of the arts, someone who has been with us a long time, working with the arts. And we just couldn't wait to get here to recognize her. This is Commissioner Lori Nugent, and she chaired the committee for Champions of the Arts, and she's going to tell us all about it.
Lori, we're glad to have you with us.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having us. The Arts and Humanities Commission has worked hand-in-hand with the Cultural Affairs Office, and we had a consultant come and do an art study for the city of Virginia Beach. You always tout this as the greatest city to live in, and we feel the arts play a big role in that statement. We offer plenty to do here for our citizens of our community, and we also have plenty of citizens who contribute to that. With the arts plan, it was decided that we would honor a private citizen for all of their work to further the arts in our city, and we have our first honoree this evening. We're very delighted to honor this person. She has done wonders for various multiple groups, and Mayor, you have participated in one of those fine events that has raised several hundred thousand dollars. And this year, we are extremely pleased to announce Ms. Barbara Lewis as the first honoree.
The other commissioners have been here, and they just need to come and join us so we can recognize Ms. Lewis.
And we have other commissioners in the audience, if they would like to come up, please, that would be great.
I'm speechless.
You've never been speechless.
I've never been speechless.
We know you want to congratulate her.
Oh, my goodness.
Yes, so in addition to this lovely certificate, we are going to have our own Hollywood Walk of Fame, this is Virginia Beach version, in Tascow Center. And along the path, we will have a brick. And as we are going to do this annually, you'll see that path grow and grow, and eventually stars are going to be on there as well. You're the first.
All right.
Well, I'm seldom at a loss for words, but I came to thinking I was going to support something to get the city to push more for the arts. And anyway, I'm here. I'm speechless. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara.
Anyway, Tascow Center, if it's for the arts, as the mayor always says, it's the best city in the world.
Amen. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, she also just celebrated her eightieth birthday.
Oh, congratulations on that.
Eight years.
Okay, Michael Calvert, if you could come forward. This is Parks and Recreation Month, and I think everyone knows the great pride we take in our parks here, and it's my pleasure to read this proclamation. Whereas Parks and Recreation Programs are an integral part of the city of Virginia Beach, with 266 parks and facilities, seven community recreation centers, 7,069 acres of parkland and open space. Whereas eighty-three percent of the community resides within a half-mile walk to the park. Whereas Parks and Recreation Programs are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our community, ensuring the health of all citizens, programming active and passive activities for citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of our community. And whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of Vision 2040, contributes to the achievement of the goals in the Sustainability Plan and supports the Urban Forest Management Plan. Whereas Parks and Recreation Programs provide therapeutic recreation and inclusion services for individuals with cognitive or physical needs. And whereas the Parks and Recreation Department is the largest youth development provider in the city, serving over 8,800 children annually. And whereas Parks and Recreation Programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. Whereas Parks and Recreation Natural Areas improve water quality, improve the quality of the air we breathe, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas Parks and Natural Areas and Open Space provides a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the Trust for Public Land recently ranked Virginia Beach as one of the best park systems nationally. And whereas the Parks and Recreation Department is a CAPRA-accredited agency. Now therefore, I, William D. Sessoms, Jr., Mayor of the City of Virginia, Virginia, do hereby proclaim, July 2016, Parks and Recreation Month in Virginia Beach, and I encourage all citizens, city members, and civic organizations to support me in supporting our Parks and Recreation Programs by visiting a community recreation center, park, or natural area. Mike, it's my pleasure to give this to you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And we do take great pride in the Parks and Recreation Department that we have here, and we thank you for all the hard work you do, along with the wonderful people that work with you.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor and City Council and City Manager. I'm pleased to be here tonight. I would like to recognize we have many members of our Parks and Recreation Commission in the audience, as well as we have Miley and Jackie that are representing the 500 full-time and 700 part-time members we have. So if I can ask them to stand, please. I have the opportunity of visiting many parks throughout this great nation, but we have without a doubt the best park system in the nation, and that's because of your all's support. I greatly appreciate it. We have three great things to celebrate this year. It's the sixtieth anniversary of our department, going way back to when we were part of the school system back in Prince of Anne County. It's the eightieth anniversary of state parks, and it's also the centennial anniversary, the one-hundredth anniversary of national parks. So regardless of where you live in Virginia Beach, there's a park close to you, and we hope to see you there soon.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming down. I open a public hearing on modifying the boundaries of Neighborhood Dredging, Special Service Districts, SSD, Hertz Cove.
No speakers, Your Honor.
Chesapeake Colony.
I have three speakers.
Call the speakers.
Michael.
Each speaker will have three minutes. We welcome you tonight, Mike.
Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Attorney, City Clerk, we must be the luckiest subdivision in this whole city. We keep getting chosen. We get now chosen again. Let's take out two more properties. This brings up, this brings the number up to thirty-five properties that have been taken out of Chesapeake and Colony. We started with 164, now we have 129, and you just heard a presentation where they're probably going to lose eight more. We'll take it down to 121. Bayville Creek lost one, Old Donation Creek lost four. We've lost over thirty-five. This is terrible. This is the fifth cut where properties have been taken out. First three cuts were very questionable. Fourth wasn't questionable, it was 100% gerrymandering. I'd like you to, I'd like to read this email from the chairman of the dredging committee to Phil Roors. Delete the following properties due to low participation in their channel. Nine properties were taken out because of low participation. What does low participation mean? It means no votes. They were going to vote no. Nine. Chesapeake Colony was passed with over eighty percent because of three votes. Three. Eighty-one point two percent, and it was brought to you as an SSD. Yet properties were taken out. These properties were taken out due to less than 50% support for dredging. This is wrong, wrong as can be. Had it been done fairly, I would not be here, I promise you. A quick aside, there's going to be two dredging transfer stations in Chesapeake Colony, in Chesapeake Colony. One is the Community Vote Ramp, that's going to be taken away, that will become a dredging transfer station. Another one is on Wolf's Neck Road, which is a very small, narrow road, deep in the colony, because a property owner said, hey, you can use my property. I have no idea what compensation he's getting, but I guarantee you it's substantial. Those roads are small, and you guys got a hot potato. When those dump trucks start going up and down those streets, you're going to hear something from the neighbors. There's at least thirty houses that are going to be affected. This is a fifty, sixty-year-old subdivision. The streets aren't like the new streets today. I feel like David against Goliath. Can I win this? I don't know, but I'm sure as hell going to try, whether you like it or not. Quote Shakespeare, "Take arms against the sea of troubles and by opposing end them." This is a sea of troubles. I ask people to stand with me, that's all I want. We have a city auditor on staff to the city of Virginia Beach. I respectfully request that you have him look into this and make a report back to you guys. You're getting a very colored viewpoint of dredging in the city of Virginia Beach.
Thank you very much for your comments. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Edwards Bobb.
We welcome you, sir.
Thank you. Earlier, you heard from Mr. Roors speak about Chesapeake Colony and especially about one property owner who was blocking the access to eight other properties. I am that property owner. If you listen carefully, I'd like to tell you exactly why that's happening. Since the inception, since the thinking about dredging was, had begun, I made contact with a number of people, trying to get them to make plans to deal with the dredging in our backyard. I spoke with, I had site visits from Mr. Roors, Mr. Gurdziel, and Mr. Gay, Thomas Gay. I have face-to-face meetings with Councilman Erin, Mayor Sessoms, City Manager Spoor, and Mr. Hanson. Seven people, all instrumental in the dredging project, and I was asking for what kind of planning could we do so that we could mitigate the problems that occurred the first time? Our colony was dredged originally in 1993, sorry, in 1993, and at that time, I gave permission to access our property and to dredge in the area. The result was that our bulkhead was destroyed. The land, our land backyard slipped down into the creek. When you approached the bulkhead, you went lower and lower and lower. When you reached the bulkhead, it was up to your chest. That all had to be redone. It cost our family $50,000. It's quite expensive, and I was not going to let that happen again. So I met with these people, hoping that there could be some plan. Nothing materialized. Finally, I said to my wife, we have to take action. I got our property survey. I wrote a letter to Mr. Spoor, tough letter, but polite, and I said essentially, don't trespass on our property. And that's why I'm blocking eight other properties at this time, because no action would be taken, no plans were developed, no attempt to mitigate the properties. The major problem is across the water, there's a dock. It uses, when the boat is moored by that dock, it uses a half of the channel. For another boat to come through the other half of the channel, then a boat butts our bulkhead. So when I had Mr. Gay over, I asked them how they're going to possibly dredge and leave the proper distance on the sides. So the creek in front of our place is not wide enough for a fifteen-foot-wide, four-foot-deep dredge if proper distance is to be accorded to the sides, one of which is bounded by our bulkhead. I asked how they were going to do that. Mr. Langley responded, it's tight. I pressed, it's very tight. I pressed again because it's our bulkhead that's in danger. He said, it's tighter than we would like it to be. Finally, I said, let me tell you how you're going to do it. You're going to cheat. Silence, followed by a weak cheat? This is our history, and this is what's happened.
Sir, to be fair, I'm going to have to cut you off, but thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you for listening.
Appreciate you coming down.
Thank you, Greenberg.
We welcome you tonight.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, I appreciate your time. I think that what we're looking at with this SSD dredging problem is a debacle, and I think the Council's going to regret it in short order. There are a couple of big problems. First of all, we just heard today about the runaway costs of this program. They drastically underestimated what it would cost in Bayville, a little tiny area with a simple dredging plan. What did they say to me? Doubled? People who are in, people who at least want it might want to pay that, but the people in the 20%, who speaks for them? Who on the Council cares that their taxes are, which already are going up far more than they wanted to, way outside of the standard rules on they wanted to, way outside of the standard rules on the increase of taxes for, for real estate? Who cares about them? Who cares that they're going to see a doubling of the taxes they didn't even want in the first place for dredging, they didn't want in the first place? There's transparency problems. Do we know that Chesapeake is still at 80%? They said it was, but where are the numbers? How can we do the math on it? It's not on the website. All these parcels falling out. Can we do the math? Are we allowed to know? Do you guys even know? Can you verify what they're telling you? There are transparency issues beyond that. The document that homeowners have to sign, they, you just heard a gentleman who said that his bulkhead fell in after the dredging. Well, homeowners have to hold the city harmless. Anyone who goes along with this thing, if the city wrecks their property, destroys their backyards, if their, if their piers are destroyed, their bulkheads are destroyed, what happens? City's held harmless. Nothing. They could destroy everything. And, and, and the taxes can go up infinitely. According to the document, there's no limit to how much taxes go up. Taxes are limited in how much they can go up, with nothing more than a vote by council once, once, once these gentlemen decide how much the taxes are going to go up. I ask you, would you agree to a plan where your taxes could be increased infinitely by the city, outside of all the code of taxes and regulation? Would you agree to that? For anything else, for education, for any other purpose that's valuable, let alone for a bunch of pleasure boat yachts pulling up to people's backyards? What they're asking of the citizens, I don't think the citizens even understand, because the ones we've talked to who said yes, they said, we didn't know if we signed that. I showed the document that they asked for people to sign to my lawyer, and he said, anyone who signs this is a fool, or has a fool for a lawyer, or didn't show it to their lawyer. I recommend that the council seriously investigate what's going on with this dredging program, because there are, there are many, many irregularities and inconsistencies with it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Sir, I assume that your home is within the district, and you're one of the 20%? Is that correct?
We are in a district that they tried to get to 80%, and they had 80% until we told our neighbors what they're actually up to, and then they didn't have 80%. And we're concerned about what's going on at Chesapeake, because Chesapeake is a canary in the coal mine. If Chesapeake is allowed to be wrecked, and also, I would ask you, do any of you know what the environmental impact will be of dredging the entire Lynn Haven? Have you asked? Does anyone know?
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
A lot of unanswered questions, gentlemen.
Thank you very much for coming down. Mr. Vice Mayor, I will now turn it over to the Consignor, please.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval under the Consignor, and the first under ordinances and resolutions. Item J1, which is ordinance to amend the city code, sections 35-64 and 35-67, raise exemption or deferral of real estate taxes for elderly and disabled persons as amended. Item 3, which is ordinance to authorize a cooperative agreement between City Council and the School Board, raise legal services to be determined by the city attorney in fiscal year 2017. Item 4, ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute an extension of the term of the ground lease between the city and the Development Authority for the amphitheater. Item 5, which is a resolution to declare an emergency due to the accumulation of excessive sand for certain properties along Sandbridge Road. Madam Clerk, if you'll please note that Mayor Sessoms is abstaining on that item.
Yes.
Just on sanctuary.
Yes. Item 7, which is ordinances to modify the boundaries and authorize a refund of SSD levies, A, Hertz Cove, and B, Chesapeake Colony. Item 8, which is an ordinance to authorize city manager to execute agreements between the city and individual property owners, raise permitting use of the Thalia Transfer Facility for private dredging. Item 10, which is ordinance to appoint the directors of planning, public works, and Parks and Recreation to serve as viewers, raise streets or alleys being altered or vacated. Item 11, the resolution to request the Hampton Roads Congressional Delegation work to support the Norfolk International Airport's efforts to build a parallel runway. Item 12, which is the ordinances, raise the Oyster Heritage Plan, item A, B, C, and D, to be deferred to July the 12th. Item 13, authorized permits allowing, and, Madam Clerk, if you please note that I'm abstaining on item 12.
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item 13, authorized permits allowing EMS agencies to operate in the city. One, renewal applications, American Lifeline Medical Transport, Inc., American Medical Transport, LLC, Cardinal Ambulance Service, Inc., Children's Hospital of the King's Daughters, and Mr. Wood and Mayor Sessoms are abstaining on that particular item. Delta Medical Transport, Inc., Emergency Medical Response, LLC, and the mayor is also abstaining on that item. Heart Song Care Transport, Inc., Life Care Medical Transports, Inc., Medical Transport, LLC, and the mayor is abstaining on that item. Nightingale Air Ambulance, the mayor is abstaining on that item. Reliance Medical Transport, LLC, Robbie's Ambulance Service, Inc., Special Event Providers of Emergency Medicine, Inc., and Tidewater Medical Transport, LLC, and the mayor is abstaining on that item. Item 2 is new applications, Shore Transport Services, Inc., MB Solutions, LLC, and New Care Carolina Ambulance, Inc. Or, item 14, which is ordinances, raise emergency medical services. One, appropriate A, $21,306 of EMS training revenue for equipment and supplies. B, $16,661 of special event revenue to reimburse for previous remissions to volunteer rescue squads. C, $27,516 of special events reimbursement revenue to remit funds to volunteer rescue squads for standby duty at special events.
Open a public hearing on planning?
Under planning for consent. Item 1, which is the application of Cheryl Scored, trustee for Floyd E. Taylor, a irrevocable trust in the Princess Anne District. Item 2, the application of Marvin M. Rollins, Jr., Gail B. Rollins trustees under the Marvin M. Rollins, Jr. Living Trust in the Princess Anne District. Item 3, application of BRG Cascades East, LLC, in the Centerville District. Item 4, application of Charles and Kelly Plaza in the Princess Anne District. Item 5, the application of Sinitra Gardner in the Kempsville District. Item 6, the application of Diana Wilson in the Centerville District. Item 7, the application of Norfolk Airport Authority in the Bayside District. Item 8, the application of City of Virginia Beach for a change of zoning, raise 10 residential district to B4K Historic Kempsville Area Mixed Use District, B2 Community Business District, B4K Historic Kempsville Area Mixed Use District, O2 Office District to B4K Historic Kempsville Area Mixed Use District, R5D Residential District to B4K Historic Kempsville Area Mixed Use District, Ag1 Agricultural District to B4K Historic Kempsville Area Mixed Use District, and the Kempsville District. Item 9, the application of City of Virginia Beach ordinance to amend the official zoning map by the designation and incorporation of additional properties into the Historic Kempsville Area Overlay District in Kempsville. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Mr. Vice Mayor, do I have a nay vote on Mr. Moss, score number eight, under planning?
Yes, Mr. Moss is voting no on item eight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
I have a vote of 80, noting the extension and Mr. Moss's nay vote you have approved to the Consignor.
Well, my vote, I consistently, when all the, about 100-something neighborhoods came down here in the very beginning, when we created the historic district, it isn't exactly the commercial development they wanted, but it's what they got, and I was the lone no vote. So I have consistently voted no on all amendments to that plan to further increase the commercialization and density in the historic district. That's the reason for my no vote.
Counsel, we still have items 6 and 9 to deal with under ordinances and resolutions. I'm going to go to number 9 first, because I will, on number 6, have to turn over the meeting to the Vice Mayor because of, to avoid a conflict of interest. So we'll do item 9. This was going to be on consent. Mr. Moss, did you want to make some comments?
I do, but these will be five separate votes. These are several ordinances, and I want to vote on each one.
Would you like for me to make a motion on each one individually, and you can...
I want an individual vote on each one.
Okay, go ahead. Do I have a motion on the city manager's annual compensation?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval, authorize the annual compensation of the city manager.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a discussion?
Well, I know there is a philosophical discussion between my peers and myself on this issue. First and foremost, I don't understand, I, public service is about public service. It's not about working for the public, it's about serving the public. And I don't understand why, in the City of Virginia Beach, to get the best, I don't think the Secretary of Defense is not the best, I don't think the governor is not the best. There's a lot of these people that are very competitive, qualified people, and they take those jobs for public service, not for public compensation. I do not understand, and I cannot accept, that we have to pay a city manager of the City of Virginia Beach more than the Secretary of Defense, more the governor than the Commonwealth, and that we can't qualify for people. Now, I didn't vote, I voted for hiring him, I didn't vote for his compensation package then, as the mayor well knows. He's been in the job maybe five, six months, and we had a tax increase, and some other things, fee increases, and families are suffering. I just think it just sounds like you're a little bit indifferent to the stagnating real incomes, if not declining, real incomes of our residents. I think it sends the wrong signal. I always think sacrifice starts at the top, and it's just not justified. I know other people think that it is, and I respect how they come to their views, but I want people to understand is, that public service is about public sacrifice. And the current salary at $250,000 is not a lot of sacrifice, with a car allowance. I know you and I both know Admiral Davidson, he doesn't get a car allowance. He has a $30 billion budget and 126,000 people.
Doesn't he have someone driving around during the day?
When he comes to work, he drives his own car.
Okay, all right, guys, just make sure.
Yeah, but my point being is, he, these people have big jobs, bigger job than the city manager of Virginia Beach, I think we all would agree. And they do it for what? Public service. And this doesn't just apply here, it applies to presidents of state universities, it's a lot of places that that applies. I think everyone knows, if you want to make big money, you go out and make it in the private sector. But we confiscate our revenue, we don't earn it. We confiscate it through taxes and fees. That's how we get our money. That's why government is the power of coercion. But when people serve, they serve for public service. So I just think we are currently adequately compensating these positions, and I think there's a time when you say, sacrifice starts at the top, and that's why I'm not voting for this race.
Any other discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
I have a vote of seven to one.
I think I see eight to zero.
It's a no vote.
All right. I have a motion for city attorney's compensation.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of the ordinance to authorize the annual compensation for the city attorney.
Second.
Any discussion?
There is. Mark does a great job, might I add. He is the person, of all the political appointees, that I most trust and respect. He's the one guy you can count on to tell you the truth, even when it isn't popular. So I do appreciate that very much, his service. But that being said, the current salary of the attorney would be greater than the Attorney General of the United States of America, and I know that's a bigger job. And so it's just on that basis alone, not because he doesn't do a great job, maybe you might give him a bonus, but just on the principle of, there has to be some relationship between what, what the job is. And it's, but I can't say but great things about Mark. And we just have a philosophical difference.
Very good. I'll call for, any other comments? I'll call for the question, please.
I have a vote of seven to one, you have approved the attorney, city attorney.
Do I have a motion for the compensation of the city clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of the ordinance to authorize the annual compensation of the city clerk.
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the question, please.
I have a vote of seven to one, you have approved the city clerk.
Do I have a motion for the compensation?
I move for approval of the ordinance to authorize the annual compensation of the city real estate assessor.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, sir.
We do have some discussion on this. Now, this is a position, the compensation, which is about $137,000. Small, but I just think it's appropriate. I don't think it's too high, but I think the base salary is correct on this position. And I just think, once again, I think, when we look at our average employees, I just think it's the time to think that we could, should be more for them, I think, if we could with the taxes on that, I would agree with you, Mr. Mayor, we don't do enough. But I think this is the case where this position is paid at the right amount, at the base salary with the car allowance.
Call for the question.
Can I say something, Mayor Sessoms?
Go ahead.
John, you know, I, I hear what you're saying, and to me, you not being in the private sector, and not having to recruit talent, you know, these aren't the highest-paid employees. We, we just went through a city manager search, where we saw city managers all over the United States, many of them with much higher salaries than what we pay ours, and I really think that we have the best in, in the world. You know, and you not being from the private sector, I know that you probably don't understand, you have to pay to recruit top talent.
It's interesting, I work in the public sector, is correct.
I know that.
We hire among the brightest scientists you can think of, who could make more money in the private sector.
And I guarantee they do after they go into the public sector.
And they come back, and while they work, it's about service to country, just like those officers are right here. And I think, when you work, they serve 30 and 40 years building a resume, maybe, not five. My point being is, public service is about public service. I don't care if someone comes and works for less in four or five years and moves on.
We're talking about the real world, not the world of academia, John. This is the real world. If we don't pay these people the top salaries, we're not going to get the best talent, and that's the bottom line, and that's the same with...
I'm loving y'all's debate, I tell you, we're going to call for the question, thank you very much.
Secretary of Defense is a high-paying, is a good-paying job.
And I guarantee, when he retires, he'll get a very good consulting job.
Yeah.
I have a vote of seven to one, you have adopted the real estate assessor.
Do I have a motion for the city auditor's compensation?
Mr. Mayor, I move the approval, the ordinance to authorize the annual compensation of the city auditor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Discussion? I would give, this gentleman does a great job, like Mark does a super job. I could support a bonus, but I can't support a salary adjustment.
I'll call for the question.
I'd like to say something, as liaison to the audit committee, I can tell you that, without a doubt, I think Lyndon does an outstanding job. I think you compare him to certainly any auditor in the region, but I think any auditor in the state. He does a phenomenal job, he has a very small, very tight workforce, and he gets in, gets stuff done, and it's extremely interesting to go to those meetings, and, and I think this is certainly adequate. I'd, I'd like to, at some point, see us talk about his salary.
Thank you. Call for the question, please.
I have a vote of seven to one, you have approved the city auditor.
And just, and I would like to say that these salaries are determined on what the market bears, and if you look at what other salaries are being paid to other city managers within our region, across the Commonwealth, and for that matter, across the country, I feel like that we're certainly not the highest, we're not the lowest, but we're competitive, and that's where we need to be. And I do want to compliment all, not only our appointees, but all of our employees for doing the great job they do every day, which allows the citizens of Virginia Beach to have a very good quality of life. All that being said, I will now turn the meeting over to the Vice Mayor to address item number 6, and I will step aside.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, are there any speakers on item 6?
I have two.
I'm sure there are. Sure they are. All right, first speaker, please.
First speaker is Bill Harrison. You only want to speak of his opposition? I do have opposition.
Well, this isn't a planning item, this is a term sheet.
Welcome, Mr. Harrison.
Would you like to speak to answer questions or to rebut?
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Robert Dean.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor. I would like to point out a couple of things I find rather disturbing about this project. Can the city attorney state for the record that Mayor Sussens has not taken part in any of the discussions as they pertain to this project? Because Town Bank is financing this project, has Mayor Sussens attended any meetings with staff or any of the principals who have vested interests in this project, or has he recused himself physically from any such meetings, including any executive session, informal session, especially this formal session, where the gavel needs to be turned over to either the vice mayor, which you have done, Mr. Jones? Any person who has a financial interest in this project is, another person is Ronald Ripley, who has been serving on the planning commission for the last seven years. Has Mr. Ripley also recused himself from any meetings where this project was being discussed? Is Mr. Ripley still a member of the Workforce Housing Board? Looking at the site and documents provided, I see no mention or location of a BMP as required by the Chesapeake Bay regs. Is it something I've overlooked? If it is not being required, who approved that decision, and will that decision result in stormwater runoff directly into Thalia Creek, which flows north into the Lynnhaven River and under the Lesnar Bridge into the Chesapeake Bay? Would someone with an astute business acumen please explain to me how it's possible, by any stretch of any imagination, that this project could be classified as economic development? Parking garages to be free and open to the public, what public? Unless you're living in apartments or visiting a resident, unless you're doing business in an office, unless you're staying or visiting the hotel or its retail restaurant, you simply will not be parking in the garage. And please don't insult the taxpayers by saying more parking is needed in town center. You would have to walk through the condo complex to get to town center, and it's a rarity, if ever, the town center parking lots are full. And when it's stated that these apartments will stimulate the city's economy and enhance public amenities, please tell me how much the Development Authority gave to the new Walmart on Columbus or the $25 million Kroger marketplace on Holland Road, or the Haygood Shopping Center, or the Collins Square Shopping Center, or any of the hundreds of shopping centers and business parks in our city? By approving this proposal, you are, in quite simple terms, picking winners and losers. This is the antithesis of what we know as capitalism and free enterprise, and it flies in the face of what made America great, the free market. There is nothing free about this project, and it's a slap in the face of every other developer in our city who isn't looking for corporate welfare or subsidies. It certainly would be interesting to hear Mr. Jones's take if this were a new funeral home proposal, and the developers want an infusion of cash to help them with their parking lot or embalming room, or some other foolish notion. There is but one description suitable, if you vote to approve, political malpractice, or if you prefer, political malfeasance. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers?
No, Your Honor.
Madam Clerk. Well, I think I will respond to one issue that Mr. Dean raised, and that's the issue of whether or not the mayor has participated in any way in the discussions pertaining to this item. And I can emphatically tell you, and I'm sure Mr. Wood, who has also been the other liaison on this project, I can emphatically tell you that the mayor has not had any participation whatsoever in the discussions on this item. That's privately or publicly. Is there any discussion from the council?
Just to get the discussion started, I'd like to move approval.
All right, Mr. Wood has made a motion to approve item six. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion, Mr.?
Yes, there is. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I'm not going to get into the business case analysis, because this item is just about approval of the terms to begin further negotiation, which will, in fact, then set the, all the specifics that would permit the kind of detailed economic analysis I prefer to do. But there is two dimensions of this that I do want to talk about. There is an existing zoning and site plan that has been approved for this parcel, as people may know, and that particular parcel has an existing, I guess, wetlands or whatever the particular board variance for construction for something already on the site. So there is a vested site plan on this property. I think probably most council members probably know that, but the public does not. But in the discussion of the overall macro level analysis, I posed the question to the deputy city manager, Mr. Doug Smith, I said, is this project going to independently move the needle of economic development in the city and drive a bigger economic growth rate? And his response on the video was no. He said no. So then you go back, and if you research and do some research, which I ask many of you to do, look up taxing, some of the financing, or these kinds of subsidies, and what you'll generally will see when you look through both the academic and the real world business models that are out there, that these projects tend to do what? To relocate activity that would take place elsewhere to a specific place because they're giving favored tax expenditure status, and they tend to create a displacement, meaning they take revenues that were flowing to existing businesses and realign that revenue flow to another location that is giving a marketplace price competitive status due to tax expenditures. So in this particular case, Patty Phillips, the finance director, and he probably will take some refinement, said that in the first 10 years, 50% of all the revenues that flowed to this site would be the consequence of displacement. So when you look at the tax revenues that will now come from this site, and you take that number and you divide it by .01 or .015, and you go and say, wow, that means tens of millions of revenue that was going to some other business now gets realigned to this location. That's not John Moss saying that, that's the city staff saying, in the first 10 years, 50% of the revenue is displacement revenue. So that means some other business, that might be the difference between them staying in business or not. Now, interestingly enough, the analysis, which I hope will to come, doesn't go the next secondary step to say whether or not that relocation would actually cause material harm in terms of going out of business to another business, which could magnify the effect. And then I asked, well, why exactly are we doing this? And the answer was, well, we're getting amenities on this location that the marketplace won't sustain, so if these are the, if this is the type of social engineering development we want, which means mixed use, high density, whatever, then we're going to have to pay for that because developer can't pass that on in the marketplace. And that goes on to say, because this is not my words, quote, consideration, quote, "The developer has stated that without the incentives, that 50% of that revenues come at the expense of existing businesses, set forth in the non-binding term sheet, this project would be scaled back to a suburban-style development with little to no structured parking." Not breaking my heart. "It is also unlikely that the planned hotel would be constructed as part of a scale-based project." So now let's get back to the part of economic development. Since when do we have a shortage of apartments? 202 apartments, apartments are not economic development. They just are not. So now let's go back and think about the city's bond, bond prospectus. And probably many of you people don't know that if you work in the retail business, the average weekly wage in the City of Virginia Beach for that is $589 a week. $589 a week, multiply that by 52, get an idea of where we're at. So when we're looking at the hotels and look at the wage, these aren't, when you think about economic development, the high-wage jobs we are trying to create. We have plenty of restaurants, we have places and shopping centers where the restaurants have gone out of business, so it's, oh, well, to make this happen, and to get the structured parking, and to get the density that they want, and to get the competitive market position that they want, it comes at the expense of existing businesses in those first 10 years by the city's own analysis. Now, there are people on this council who may think that that's appropriate role for government to pick the winners and the losers, and to make other people lose revenue to move it to their location, and they think that's a proper role for us to do. Because clearly, we have done it repeatedly. Clearly, the economic growth rate of the city continues to underperform the national average for a lot of reasons, not just for this. And clearly, our average wages have not moved up in real times despite all the government intervention to try to pine the pump and pick the winners and losers. So it would be a refreshing thing, something new, something novel, to let the free market really work, because the net revenue, by their own calculation, was $7.7 million, if my memory serves me correctly. Well, guess what? Over a 20, over a 25-year period, so you divide 25 into that, you get maybe 350 a year. Well, guess what? You get a $30 million property, and you can get $300,000, you get property tax right there. So you're not getting that big a net value over that 20-year period over the traditional development. Matter of fact, you could get even less. And guess what you didn't do? You didn't harm existing businesses by using government fiscal policy to give a favored few a market competitive advantage. And I believe that is fundamentally wrong, that's probably a philosophical difference with my peers here, but I think ultimately, the public gets to judge. You know, and you'll have an opportunity to do that, and decide if you think, and I hope you're not one of those small businesses that get impacted by this favored special tax structure. But I'll leave the more detailed analysis when the actual thing comes back, and we can crunch the numbers and really go through a tutorial so that people can truly understand who's paying and who's getting, and is it worth the price.
Are there any other council members who'd like to comment? If not, the vote's open.
I have a vote of seven to one, excuse, six to one, with the mayor being absent. You have authorized the City View Two project.
Thank you. Next item is the appointments, and I would like to read the list of appointments, and then after I read it, if somebody would make a motion. To the Board of Building Code Appeals, Mr. David Michael Hudson. To the Development Authority Reappointment, Mr. Peter Mueller. And Mr. Charlie M. Salee. To the Eastern Virginia Medical School, David Devad Arias. To the Historical Preservation Commission, Caitlin Jefferson as a junior for Kellum High School. And Lucas Anderton, senior, for First Colonial High School. To the Investigation Review Panel, Susan T. Mayo. Parks and Recreation Commission, Garland G. Payne for the Kempsville District. The Public Library Board, Diana Leclair. And Kelly Miller. And to the Review and Allocation Committee, Edith Weiss. To the Wetlands Board Reappointment, Kenneth D. Jobe. And Richard W. Woodmore.
I've moved that we accept the appointments as read by the vice mayor.
Is there a second? Not necessary, really, it's a nomination. Okay, the vote's open.
I have a vote of eight, seven to zero, you have approved appointments as read by the vice mayor.
Thank you. Is there any further business to come before the council? If not, the meeting's adjourned.